Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this regular meeting of the Vader City Council. It is Thursday, May 27 at 6:00 PM. Roll call.
Donna Rogers here. Jason Daley.
Here.
Randy Hall.
Here.
Mike Carson.
Mike did get ahold of us. He is busy tonight working, so he was unable to attend.
Samantha Lovelady.
Here.
Mayor Shott.
I am here. Thank you. Pledge of allegiance. Mr. Hall, will you do the honors?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, without any injustice at all.
Thank you. Mayor's report. Waste water treatment plant update. Today, there was the in-person pre-construction meeting that was held here at City Hall. More on that during the special reports with Civil West, who is here to talk about that tonight. But in a nutshell, start seeing a lot of activity here in the coming weeks. I think they said Thursday, they're really going to start taking an active role down there. More to come on that. Lawsuit update. In the case of Costello versus City of Vader, there's an upcoming mediation date at the end of June, and hopefully that closes out that code enforcement action. Jail Foundation, we have started to solicit official bids. We sent that out to five different contractors off the small works roster that we subscribe to via MRSC. We haven't heard back from any of those yet, but once we do, and we have a substantial amount of those, those bids will come before City Council for contractor selection. And of course, the big news of this week, the jail vandalism. On Tuesday night, three of the windows were broken out. The church did have some footage of that. In fact, a number of people around town have had footage of that. That, well, I don't want to call him gentleman, but that male perpetrator seemed to have committed the crime, hung out in town for a variety of time after that, just kind of milled around after breaking windows. And so, and the motions of him looked like, suggested that he was not a sound mind. In fact, John said he looks like he sat down at the chair inside the jail for a while and bled, saying as he broke himself on the window coming into it. And then while he was in there, he broke out the other windows from the inside out, including the one with the bars, so there was no way you could ever come out through there. So definitely not of sound mind, and just didn't take anything, just hanging out, breaking windows. So in any case, Sheriff's Farm took DNA evidence. They have the blood on file, and we have different camera footage from around town. If anyone else has some or knows someone that might have some footage, please get that to City Hall or the Sheriff's Department. But we did file an insurance claim, and the insurance will cover it with no deductible, so we'll be able to get all that repair work done at no expense to the city. We were thinking about actually doing that after the foundation work was completed. That way, any new windows that were installed did not get jostled in the foundation work. But in the meantime, John has buttoned it up with some plywood to keep the water out. It is secure and won't get any further damage. Is there any other questions on the jail vandalism? No? Okay. Council reports. Any council members have anything to report? No? All right, moving on to agenda approval. I do not have any additions. Does anyone else? No?
I'd like to make motion that we approve this, the agenda for City Council meeting, 5/27/2021.
We have a motion by Mr. Daley to approve the agenda as written. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seceded by Ms. Lovelady. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the City Council meeting minutes for 5/13/2021.
We have a motion by Ms. Lovelady to approve the City Council meeting minutes for May 13/2021. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seceded by Mr. Hall. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
I make the motion to approve the voucher approval ending in May 29,925,60, with a May 20 to 21 total of 54,591,37.
We have a motion by Mr. Hall to approve the vouchers as written. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seceded by Ms. Lovelady. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Special reports. Civil West and Roblins Incorporated. Unfortunately, Roblins was not able to be with us tonight, but Civil West is.
Matt Waddington from Civil West Engineering, with me and Robert Boyer, also from Civil West. Robert's going to be the guy on-site here at the treatment plant during the course of the construction, so you guys will be seeing him around a bunch, I'm sure. We had a pre-con meeting with the contractor, basically going over the roles during construction, who's going to be doing what, contact lists. Nothing new came up from it, but the contractor will be here starting, they're going to mobilize their equipment in on Thursday, a week from today, and then the week after that, they'll be starting to be out here doing work. So we talked to them about using A Street. Is it eight? So that'll be their primary access. And like I said, so starting at the next week, beginning of the week after, expect to see more traffic going in and out of there for a while. We did warn them that there were kids around and playing on that street, to be careful, so they don't upset. It should be, you know, once they get started, they're going to be moving pretty quick, getting things going. So we're excited to see that happen. So if anyone has any questions, I can answer them.
What's your timeline?
Contract says they have one year to complete it. That was, that they started a month ago, so 11 months from now, they should be done. They do have an intermediate milestone to basically have the new treatment plant operational by the end of October, basically, so that the winter flows can be treated in that new plant. But it won't be all buttoned up until spring.
Donna, you have a question?
No.
Okay, well, I appreciate you guys letting me come and talk, and look forward to things getting started here.
Okay. Just in general, was there another in-person update the council could expect at some point? I know we're going to have some written reports that we can share with council as it goes on.
Yeah, we can, I'll be happy to come up and do a kind of an in-person update. Maybe we can do that every month or two. I would say, you know, this time next month, we'll certainly be doing the swing things, and so maybe we can just set that as a date, the second one in June. We'll plan on coming up and giving an update. We will talk to Diane. We're going to be taking lots of pictures during the construction, and we'll send her the pretty ones. Post on the website and wherever, and kind of give updates along the way.
I'd like to remind council members that the area is going to be a construction site once they get going, and so there's going to be safety restrictions and probably controlled access and things like that because of the safety, so.
I was going to say, those kids play in the sewer area. We'll have to curb that hopefully during their construction. So the safety is the responsibility of the contractor is down there, so, you know, if I go on-site, or Robert goes on-site, or you, going to have to be wearing hard hats and safety shirts. And so, one of the things I did talk to the, what we did talk about at our meeting today was kind of the lines of communication, and so if anyone here has questions about what's going on down there, I appreciate that those questions come through Civil West, and we'll relay those to the contractor and get back. That way, I have all the communication, and I know what's going on.
Yeah, and there's going to be a finite number of people that are going to be down there that would have the big picture anyway. Most of the people down there are probably just going to be focused on one part of the project or another.
And then at a certain point, maybe it's towards the end of the summer, when things are looking like they're getting, looking different, be happy to, maybe we can do a tour, and we can take people down there and show them what's been going on. But, you know, again, if anyone wants to go down there and see it, coordinate it through us so we can make sure the contractor knows.
Great. Super. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah, you're good.
What is the time for start and stop of the day? Are you eight to five? Are you seven since summer's here? What were your hours?
They are working, fighting, so they're not going to be doing long days. But I would imagine they're probably going to want to get started, you know, between seven and eight. So if that's going to be an issue, we can push them and say you can't start until eight. But I don't know that what they're going to be doing is too loud, and they're going to have equipment, but it's a ways away. If it is an issue, please let me know.
Does our sewer treatment plant person still continue working as normal?
Yeah, so the overall plan right now is, there's three ponds down there, and Pond Three is pretty much unused at this point. They're going to bring Pond Three online and have that be the dominant treatment process during the construction on Ponds One and Two. So they'll get Ponds One and Two cleaned out, relined, and operational. Then they'll move, they'll bypass all the flow from Three over to One and Two, and then we can decommission Three once and for all. So, yeah, we have to be, obviously, we have to be fully operational the entire time. So a big part of that was creating a plan for that, and Bill, our wastewater operator, is aware of that. He's actually part of the process, and he'll be down there to make sure that we still maintain compliance, because we still have to maintain our, we can't start polluting Olaquad at any point in time, right? More than we do already. It's just part of it.
So how do people contact you to get, do they have to go through the office here? If they want to go for tours or something like that, or have questions?
Yeah, I would say coordinate with Diane, and she can get in touch with me. We would kind of ask that there be a project manager at the city who kind of coordinates from the city side, and that's going to be Diane, so if there are any questions.
Okay, yeah, just so people know, you know, because you're saying go through you, but how do we go, who do we go through to get to you?
Yeah, that's a good question. Shane goes from Diane to me, to the contractor, and then back.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
See you next month.
We'll be in touch. Next on the special reports, the Vader Park Board.
Hello. So, a couple things.
Please identify yourself.
Oh, yes, Kelly Chai, Park Board Chair. And so we have a couple things going on. Well, one big thing right now is at McMurphy Park, we're doing our chips for trails, and it's going to be June 5th, Saturday, June 5th, is going to be the day that you can drop off your brush and debris and everything, nothing larger than five inches, no thorns. And Caesar, he's going to have his, he's donating three hours of his time and his tripers' time to chip the debris that gets brought down to us. And then we have people who've been volunteering to come and help us spread the chip on there. And then it's also going to be, Lions Club is going to be the volunteers that come to work on Saturday. We also have, if you call, we have flyers, we have it in the paper, I think it went into the paper. And we also have on the radar board, a phone number to get ahold of, so that you can, if anyone has a hard time getting their stuff there, then where they're just not available to get down there, then you can sign up for a time slot, and you have your debris sitting out on the side of the, outside of your home where it's easy access, and we'll load it up for you and take it down to the site. You don't have to say, it's, we take care of all of it there. Any questions about the chicken business?
Cool.
Yeah, it's exciting. Worden Park, been updated, heard about the foundation, the windows, the break-in. Other than that, right now, the biggest thing is that we're just waiting for our contract from our CO to come in. In the meantime, the next couple of weeks, we're going to go ahead and put out for official bids to get finalized numbers on what everything is actually looking like right now. So, because when we got all of our estimates last year, things, there's been some price differences and increases.
This is for the playground?
For the new playground, for the Worden Park, yeah, with the sidewalk and quiet equipment, so. Yeah. Any questions about Worden? And we've also been working on grants, and we have the other grants too, to help with costs as well. So in fact, I just submitted in the official letter of inquiry for a change grant to be able to go towards the project, so hopefully if there, with the cost differences that there may be, that may help cover that as well. And that could be from mid-July to end of July, that sort of spreading around out there. Any questions?
All right. Thank you very much. Next special report, the Vader Planning Committee. I see Scott is online. Kathy, who's going?
I wasn't there.
Kathy was not in the committee.
Kathy's shaking her head like, not me, so.
I wasn't there, that's why I thought I was going to say.
Okay. All right, Scott, please go ahead.
Well, not much happened in our last meeting. We did have the public hearing regarding the Vader Shoreline Master Program. The planning committee's there, was his comment point, went over the various changes that the ecology periodic would use.
Scott, you're kind of coming in and out. Maybe if you stay closer to your microphone.
Scott, that's worse.
Scott, you kind of, yeah, you kind of broke up. We lost you there towards the end. I think you want a speakerphone.
Does he want to call into the regular phone? Might be easier.
Scott, I think we lost you. All right, Scott. Last chance.
Bye, Scott.
All right, Scott Gross, thank you very much. Thanks for the update from Planning Committee. Yeah, Scott was saying that they had the Shoreline Master Plan, the final public hearing at the last meeting, and so that's probably the last public input that we need to do for that. We're going to need to submit the SEPA for that, wait the waiting period, and then it'll need to come before council, for council to, for final approval of that Shoreline Master Plan. Any questions on that? It's kind of just a formality, and every city with a shoreline, as it is, Olaquad is a shoreline, has to update this for Department of Fish and Wildlife and ecology reasons and so. It's time to do that. So we've got a grant to cover it, so it's all free. Well, someone's paying for it, but not us. All right, moving on to city business. Item number one, council to discuss the proposed Lewis County Water Franchise Agreement. So I wanted to give council an opportunity to take a look at this in advance. So every business that does business within the city right-of-way, whether it be a utility like water or phones or even garbage, they do business on the city right-of-way, and so there's a franchise agreement with the city. And so this was our opportunity to ask for some updates, as our water franchise agreement did expire with the county. And so a few things in here of note that we've included in our request for a franchise. The big one being Section Five, coordination in general, 5.2 and 5.3. Water connections require a sewer connection. And so one of the things that's been happening. One of the things that's been happening is at least one ratepayer that we have, well, there should be a ratepayer. They've got, they applied for their water through the county. The county turned on their water, and they never bothered coming down to the city to ask for a sewer account. And so they're just not paying sewer because of that. And since they've never signed a contract with us, it's kind of hard for us to enforce things with that. And so part of this agreement is communication between the city and the county. If they give out a water connection, they need to talk to us and make sure we have given out a sewer connection, and no water unless you get sewer. There you go. The next, Section 5.3, termination of sewer service. And this has been the big one for years now, right? If they don't pay their sewer bill, we can tell the county, and the county will shut off their water. That's in the new franchise agreement. And there's the incentive to have people pay their bill. At last count, we were close to $30,000 in back sewer bills, people that have not paid. We have at least one customer with $8,500 of accrued debt. So this will give us the ability to shut off their water. So those are the big ones that are in here. There's a couple little ones in here. If you remember, county started charging us for meter reads a few years ago. And so there's an administrative and permit cost, so in agreement, in, let's see, as it's written, "The current cost for the city's meter reads is about $322 every other month. In exchange for county releasing the right to charge the city for these meter reads, as these new costs now exist or may be here and after adjusted, the city agrees not to charge or otherwise bill the county for the annual administrative expenses of administering this franchise agreement, and further agrees the city will provide up to two excavation permits per year to county without charging permit fees." So the idea is, we can get released of that $322 commitment every other month in exchange if we give the county a little bit to them. Originally, the county's issue, if we remember back several years ago, was, they considered it to be a gift of funds. If the county provides us with the meter reads, they pay a guy to read the meters, and then they give us those meter reads. They said it was a gift of funds, because they paid for something that we got. And so, you know, this is a way for us to not have to pay that anymore. So lots of good stuff in there. We did send this off to county this week for initial review. They said it'll take a couple weeks for the attorneys to go through it. We're hopeful that they'll agree to all of this. I wanted to show it to everyone, for one, get you excited about the fact that we could finally get our water sewer bills paid for, and two, to get any input. If you read through this exciting 17-page document, if there was anything else that you could think of that you'd want to change or add.
I did too, but it was good to me, especially the being able to collect on the sewer.
Yeah, that's the big one. Judy, yeah?
Well, question, so the $30,000 you're sitting on, what will happen with those folks?
They're in for.
They're not in the grandfather clause, are they?
They're in for a rude awakening.
Okay.
There are a couple of issues right now. One, with the declaration of emergency from the governor, you can't shut off people's utilities and things like that, so.
That day will end.
That day will end. The other option that we were mulling over before that happened was small claims court, going after folks in small claims court for this. But once again, COVID and everything, so. But they'll still have to pay. This will take care of it, and they're not grandfathered in. I don't know what kind of payment plan they're going to have to come up with to pay for $8,000, but not a problem. Yeah, Janet?
Well, I just was curious about the whole, I think that's awesome, about shutting off their water, but. So I've had problems in my neighborhood, and they've gotten some tickets from the sheriffs. And, you know, if they don't pay the ticket, and they said I could take them to the small claims court, but even if the judge says, yeah, you owe it, doesn't mean they have to pay you. And it doesn't mean you're going to get it from them, and they're not going to go to jail, because they didn't pay it.
Yeah.
So it's like, sometimes even if we waste our money taking them to court or whatever, you're not going to see it anyways. I mean, that's why I ended up not doing it, because I thought, why should I waste money to file?
Yeah.
When I know they're not going to pay it, and they're telling me that, oh, they did.
Yeah, and we've put liens on properties before, but if they don't sell their house or something.
Right.
It just sits there. But we have had some, a couple of homes sell, and we did get our money back from this. So it does work, but, you know, if they're going to sit there for 30 years and not pay, it's a long time to wait to get your payments.
Well, exactly.
But anyway, this will be a surefire way to get them to pay.
And can you shut their water off? Because one time I had a rental, and I shut their water off, and they called the health department. And the health department said, we couldn't shut their water off. Because I don't know if that's, that was a serious call.
I think that's a landlord-tenant thing. That's more of a landlord-tenant thing. Like, we can shut their water off, but you can't. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's a landlord-tenant thing.
I don't, I don't know.
You can't leave them that water.
The health department had told us because they had paid their, you know, bill. And because it was a health hazard, they turned their water off.
I know the water company can turn your water off for not paying, so I'm assuming that we can turn it off for not paying our sewer.
Yeah.
So I wouldn't see, yeah.
That's the idea.
Especially for an eight-grand bill.
Any other input on this water franchise agreement?
I was just going to say.
Wanted to share it with you all.
As far as the small claims actions, you can sue and get a judgment, but if they have no bank account, no job, it's hard to execute the judgment. I, in fact, I used to do that as part of my job, in credit classes. So if they do have a job, or you don't have a bank account, you can attach those, I, you attach the job rate, raise it up to 25%, I believe, and you can attach a bank account, and pay for your judgment.
Are you talking about rates on the payment?
No, if you have, yeah, if individually you have a judgment against somebody, yes, you can go to the court and execute that judgment, and even the sheriff or process server will serve that execution on the bank, and take the money out of the account or to the employer, where they withhold a percentage of the paycheck until paid.
Oh, okay.
So if they do have something proactive, then it's worth it, but otherwise, you might be stuck with, put the lien on the house, like.
Hopefully, you won't have to go that route, and hopefully this will be the incentive. I mean, not being able to flush your toilet or take a shower is, for most people, that's an incentive.
I would think so.
I don't know. Any other input on the water franchise agreement? I hope that their attorneys agree to it, and it'll just be a slam dunk, and we'll be good to go.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay, well, no other input then. Moving on to item number two, council to discuss the draft six-year transportation improvement plan. Some of you remember, you've seen this before. It's just a part, for a city, if you're a part of the urban growth management, fauna, urban growth management like Vader does, every year, you have to update your six-year transportation improvement plan. And so, and we have to adopt it by someday in July. We have to have a public hearing, we have to have a resolution and all this stuff. So anyway, I just wanted to show it to you. It's substantially not changed from last year, obviously. It's just more of a, if you have any input, now's the time. Otherwise, we'll submit it, and we don't actually have to do any of this work, it's just the plan. So for a small city like this, we can pretty much list every road on it. For other larger cities, they'll have master plans with all of this stuff and engineer drawings, but for us, this is enough for us.
So I have a question. Why the one on Fourth and Sixth on D Street? At Fourth Street? There is no, I mean, it isn't in. So why is it on, you got 900 feet on there? So do you know what that is about?
No, this is taken right from the comp plan this last year.
That's, okay, so I'm just wondering why we would pay Fourth Street when it isn't, I mean, I wouldn't waste the money on this.
We're not going to pay Fourth Street.
Okay, so let's pull that out.
We can remove that.
Yeah, and then D Street between, from Ninth down to 11.
D from Ninth?
That's really bad down there.
Oh, down to Benals, huh?
Yeah. Also.
Want to add that one up? Do you want to add that one on there?
Yeah, I, I added it.
What's what?
D Street down to, from Ninth down to...
D Ninth to 11th? Okay.
To the end of the road. That would type on three, the 11th Street down there that we're in, at one time at Ross.
Okay, can do that.
And let's see, I have another one, Park Street between E and F. There's not, I, I'm just curious, because it's, there's not that many people on that street, but it is kind of nasty.
Because the gravel, it's still gravel, man.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we can definitely add those, those rows.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. It's what we needed. Okay, so we'll get those added on there, and then we'll just start the process going, so we can have this... We've gotta have a public hearing, which means we have to advertise it in the newspaper, we'll have to wait 15 days, then we can have the public hearing, and then the council can adopt it and all this stuff, so we'll get it, we'll get it going. All right, lastly on the city business, item number three, council to discuss tractor replacement options. So if you, you all saw my email last week, the tractor is done. The transmission had a catastrophic failure. It broke, it jammed, and then it cracked, basically cracked the whole frame housing that the transmission sits inside. So unless you can find a half of a 1991 Ford tractor, there's no fixing it. It's, it's, if you weld it, it's just gonna break again. And so we're exploring options for a replacement tractor. I know I solicited, kind of put the bug in all of your ears last week about any information that you can give as far as quality tractors that are available, or good... Good places to go. So if you remember, we had $7,000 in the budget this year for tractor repair, which we did not use yet, thankfully, we didn't put $7,000 into the tractor and have it break. I remember at budget season last year, council, I think specifically Jason, was suggesting maybe we should just buy a new tractor. And so, hey, you got your way. The other additional money I was thinking, if you remember, we had budgeted $8,000 for a urban design standard update, and it's very likely that we're gonna get a $20,000 grant through the county to cover that, which means we have an extra $8,000 that we could put towards the tractor. So that puts us up to 15, without getting too creative in the budget and finding some other money here and there, which I know that we can do. We are also in the midst of talking to the insurance company about the tractor, because it is a catastrophic failure, it's not a regular maintenance-type item, and the tractor is listed as an asset on our insurance, which very well means they may cover part of the replacement cost, in which case we'll have even more money there. Not to mention the fact that the old tractor is not very useful to us at the moment, and the council could surplus that, and maybe we could get some money for the parts that are available on that. So, that said, lots of options for monies to get the, get the price of an, to afford a brand-new tractor for the city, which would be pretty exciting. Last year, I did sign the city up for a program called Sourcewell, which is a government and education, kind of a group buying resource. And you can get discounts on a variety of things. And Kubota is one of the companies that offers discounts, and they can give 22% off of tractors that would be exactly what we're looking for. And so I'm waiting to get, to hear back from the Kubota dealer in Chehalis on a quote utilizing those discounts.
So what kind of a tractor are we looking for?
Probably something similar in horsepower, so we're looking between 40 and 50 horsepower diesel, of course. That is compatible with the attachments that we have, and of course, it's pretty, it's a standard thing, so...
So, do we have a backhoe?
We do not have a backhoe.
I think we need a backhoe.
I did ask that dealer to give us a quote for a backhoe attachment as well, so that'll, that'll come in that quote.
And is it gonna be heavy enough, rather than, because that little horse is little, actually?
They, they, yeah, the backhoes, if you look at the, I was looking at the buckets on them today, they're, they're not your standard big guys, you know, they're just...
It's a compact tractor, it's not gonna be...
Yeah, yeah, treasure one, yeah. And so it'd be big enough, and they're just, they're designed for it. Anyway, so that'll be an option, I'll have that for council to consider. But if anyone else can get quotes or have good ideas and discounts for a quality used one, please get that to City Hall, I don't know if any...
I don't think we should buy a used one.
No?
We don't need somebody else's junk. And I was kind of pricing out used ones online, they're about what you're gonna pay me anyways. So finding a quality used one, you might as well spend the extra bucks and get a warranty and kind of cover ourselves in that regard. Another option I was kind of referred to by some farm friends was looking into Bobcat, so...
Okay, yeah, you mentioned that, I wanna, I wanna see what they have. I saw, I think I saw Bobcat on Sourcewell. I'll look there too and see if they give the discount on smaller equipment.
They're supposedly a more affordable chap, or tractor option, but they're also very reliable, from everyone that I've talked to that has one.
Okay.
John mentioned that we could go down a little smaller tractor, as long as we could handle the attachments.
I don't think we should go smaller, I think we should go bigger.
Yeah, if anything, you want to stay around 40 horsepower, something that's heavy.
Kubota could probably fit that need, even if they were sort of a little smaller.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I was gonna have them quote us, the discounts on the L-series and the M-series tractors that Kubota has, I didn't know anything about tractors until last week, so... But the M-series, they start at about 60 horsepower, and so that'd be a substantial increase from what we have now.
Oh, and actually, on the Bobcat note, they will bring tractors down for us to try out. So if John wanted to, like, sample out the tractor option, we could...
Tractor sampling.
Right, and he could, like, test drive his tractor.
Let's make a date of it.
It'll be a council...
Everyone's like, my turn!
And I know every man wants to drive a Bobcat, so it might be a fun day.
Okay. So if anyone has any other, anyone has any information that they've found in the last week or so, great. We're gonna continue to find, get some more quotes, see what we're working with, see if we can find other discount programs out there. I know these folks up there mentioned a Washington State governance discount that we would probably qualify under as well.
Would you motion to start surplusing the old tractor or anything?
Well, we would... Well, we would absolutely need to have a council motion for that. I think there's, there used, I know there was a form, but I think it was kind of...
Form, there's, yeah, we need to do a form.
Okay. So is that something that council is, that was my question.
That was good, Diane.
Yeah.
Right. So if that is something that, that we want to do, if we just want to say the surplus, so we can kind of cash it out as fast as possible, we can have that available.
It's like his pants, partly, you might watch out for the first to make sure that they don't have, like, this crap.
Oh, they get, they get the Hulk then?
Yeah, they might. You might want to check with insurance before we commit to it. Because like, if you total your car, they take your car, right? You don't just get to piece it out.
Yeah, and if they want to come haul it away, that's, that'd be great.
Yeah, that'd be great too, then we don't have to haul it.
Okay, so, okay, so we can, we'll definitely follow up with the insurance, see if we can get some cash from them. Also, if they want the, if they want the Hulk or not, and if not, we can have a surplus form for you guys at the next council meeting. And see if we can't find some other money out there too to help with this. All right, any other input or questions on that? No? Okay. Public comment?
Judy Costello's side.
I don't think I'm the one on that. I think it was on the front. Judy Costello said on Sixth C Street. I would like to address my comment to Kelly. I would like to thank you very much for the chipper trail thing. And I think what you're doing down there is wonderful, and that's a great resource of giving stuff out in my yard, down to you. And I also have rounded up four volunteers, so we look forward to seeing one with it. That's my comment. Thank you.
Great, thanks.
What was the hours of that, by the way, I forgot?
For at McMurphy's? It was 9:12, so he'll be done at 12 o'clock.
Okay.
So anytime, quarterback.
Okay, and that was the only public comment, correct? Okay. Elected official comments, elected officials?
My kind of another place to get, get a shot, if anybody's still looking for the shot, I got, I got the Johnson &amp; Johnson on Washington Way. Walk in very quick, one and done, kind of thing, so if anybody's looking for a place, I, that's a good place. It's the free clinic right next to Papa Murphy's on Washington Way.
Okay, I, I'm next, I guess. I want to know if there's a plan when this park goes in. How's it gonna be maintained? That's gonna take maintenance to maintain the park with all this new equipment and stuff and keeping it up. So John's pretty sad out there.
It'll be, it'll be maintenance-free for quite a few years. The, the equipment itself is gonna be brand-new. And so it, it'll be just there. It'll have bark chips underneath, similar to what we have at landscaping. And then it's just grass and concrete, which is what we already have now, so...
Okay, well, it's still gonna need some maintenance.
It's just like the park does now, yeah, but the, the equipment itself will be relatively maintenance-free.
Well, we'll see. So anyway, there's only one of John, and he keeps getting more and more and more work, but we can't afford to hire him a helper, but we've got one for the office. And another question I have is why nothing on the north side of town gets any maintenance, like the ditch on D Street that has standing water in it year-round, and it's never, that's never maintained. I mean, it's always bad. And then that ditch on 10th Street that's like no man's land, that you guys don't not want to touch between D and B, and it's just full. And it's, that property there, it's just a swampland. And I'm, I'm curious why those ditches haven't been cleaned out, and why we can't clean them out.
I, I can certainly say I haven't been avoiding ditches. Which one, which ones?
Well, that's been done for years, years, years.
She said 10th and B.
It's not as if I have ditches that I hate. Which ones, which ones?
It's between D, on 10th Street, between D and B.
10th, D to B?
Yep.
And there was another one we mentioned?
North side of the street, and then the one on D Street that runs down towards the mansion. That ditch stands with standing water in it all the time, and it does not drain.
Must be on the lower side where it flattens out down there?
Yeah, it's on the east side of the road. And then there's also that pipe that comes down through the property there, that drains across D Street. They've taken the fence down now and the gate. I don't know if that was a city gate. Dave said he thought it belonged to the city. Because we go in there to maintain that pipe that drains down off of F Street up in there, and E Street.
Okay.
So and that water stands there too, and there's that pond there on that property where that water drains into, and doesn't seem to be able to get across the street as well. Or I don't know if that ditch is plugged, or, or what, but I think that needs some looking into.
Is it on the north side of 10th down there?
The one on 10th Street is on the north side of the road.
Okay. Now that, I know that area on the north side of 10th down there that you're talking about, if you look on the county site, if you look at the wa, like the water features, if you put the water feature overlay on the city, that's like a, that's actually considered a...
Wetland?
A wetland, right there.
Right, but the ditch still could be cleaned out.
Yeah, we have to be careful with that, because I know if you...
It might not be a wetland, and you want the ditch to not drain.
If you start draining wetlands, you get the trouble, so...
Cleaned out.
So, okay.
I mean, it's a drainage ditch, or it was at one time.
All right, all right, I wrote it down, we'll take a look at it. In fact, it was raining, I could probably drive by this evening and take a look.
I, I have one more thing. On C Street where they put in those new homes on between Sixth and Seventh, they put in that driveway, and then I know the, the yard right there, I'm just waiting for, are we, are we taking back C Street? Are we gonna put in a whole C Street there, or?
There was no intention to extend C Street, so the contractor put in the, you know, filled out the driveway for the two new houses, and then he smoothed out that, the dirt that was excavated from this new sewer that was put in there in the driveway, so...
It looks good, I was just wondering if, as, as a city, if we're gonna block that from people, I think, driving through that grassy spot to get there.
Well, that's all swampland over there too. I don't know how they got a permit to build there to begin with.
I, I hope no one drives down the driveway and then crosses the, that's someone else's yard. I mean, I guess it's right of way to the highway, but I know the folks that live next to it there, they probably would not be very happy if we were driving.
So I'm kind of looking out for them, because I just want to save us a big tenet, there's...
I'd like to think that once, that once we get grass going in there and everything again, that it'll be pretty...
Is there a way on that?
Like a block?
Is there a way on the road there to put up a barrier, like you did down on Park Street going up in Chana Valley?
Could, I mean, we could put some...
Put a parking barrier or something?
Yeah, we could put a little sun down.
Kind of up to the homeowner that does mow the lawn, right?
Pardon?
Up to the homeowner that, that mows the lawn to put something in front of someone who's driving?
They want it to, huh?
I mean, at the end of the road where it ends at that house, it's C Street, right?
That swing set was there before. They had moved, when they did put their road in, they moved the swing set. They could put the swing set back over there, and there you go.
Does that road, is that C Street, it, it belongs to the city?
Yeah, it's right of way, all the way...
The city can put a barrier up there?
We could, yeah, it's right of way, all the way from Sixth to Highway.
Then we should put a barrier up, if we think it's already an even problem.
The city can put a barrier up on the city street.
Has anyone driven through there yet?
I've seen tires, I've seen tires drive.
Really?
Yeah. That's why I mentioned it, because I, it's probably when it was dry, but still, right?
I know, for a fact, I know somebody that's gonna drive through, so that's up.
You?
No, not me. Not me, I've been in the middle of conversation.
So you're just itching to drive through C Street?
Oh, yeah?
Okay, okay.
That potential muddy mess that we're looking at.
Okay. Any other elected official comments? All right, hearing done, this meeting is adjourned at 6:47 PM. Thanks, everybody.